I'm so glad you're all here. Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the vote.
Oh, please.
Sure. Kellogg?
Here.
She maker?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Hostetter?
Here.
Con?
Up here.
Okay, starting. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to excuse Devon, so sorry.
So moved. Second.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
She maker?
Aye.
Con?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have a big week this week. A lot is happening. Wednesday, we have bicentennial meeting at six o'clock. Thursday, we're doing a downtown cleanup from four till whenever we get done. So for those of you that are unsure what we're doing in the downtown, we're cleaning it up, getting it ready for Vintage in the Village. So we're gonna be pulling weeds, spraying weeds, putting mulch down and sweeping the sidewalks and the edge of the streets. So if you are not busy and you wanna come down and help, bring your gloves, bring your broom, and come on down. We'd love to have you help us. We have the Peace Officer Memorial at the courthouse at two o'clock on Friday.
Can I touch on that?
Yeah, sure, sure.
So in the event of inclement weather, we're planning to have the service on the third floor of the courthouse in the common police courtroom. And to look at the weather right now, it doesn't look real promising, but anything can change here in the next few days. But just wanted to throw that out there. Everybody's welcome. There should have been a personal invitation at the counter here for the meeting. So I hope that all of you can be there.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, Brad. And then Saturday, we have Alliance Club Chicken Barbecue Dinner and Vintage in the Village. So, yeah, busy week. I did wanna add one thing that we don't have, that we haven't talked about before. June fifteenth, when we're doing a Walk in the Past at the Oak Hill Cemetery Tour, there's also a Love Inc Golf Scramble that day at Fire Ridge. It's $400 a team, $100 individual. If you wanna sponsor a hole, it's $200 a hole. So if you're interested in any of that, get in contact with Love Inc. They would love for you to help out with that. Bicentennial information, as you can all see, the mural is coming together. It looks really nice. Once Marlee is done, she's gonna let it sit for a few weeks and then she'll come back and seal it. And so that will be able to keep it for a while. Otherwise, there's no other updates on the bicentennial things. Is there any visitors that would like to talk to council? All right, we'll move on. Can we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes, please?
So moved.
A second. Con?
Vaughn?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
She maker?
Aye.
And Hostetter?
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Con?
She maker, second.
Con?
Aye.
She maker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Okay, Bill Resolution 2024-11. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $133,479.54? Hearing none, we have a motion to pay.
So moved. Second.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
She maker?
Aye.
Hostetter? I'm sorry. Con?
Yes.
All right, Nate?
All right, Planning and Zoning Board met the beginning of May. I can't remember the date. It was regular scheduled meetings. Big Ten Properties purchased 360 South Crawford. It used to be a duplex many years ago. It was converted back to a single-family residence. It's located in a single-family residential district. So Big Ten is asked, or has applied to convert it back to a duplex. To do that, it has to be rezoned. So Planning and Zoning recommended approval of that request. The next step in the process is for us to set a public hearing. Has to be at least thirty days out, so July eighth would be the next available council meeting date. Typically do them six forty-five-ish, if that's okay with everybody. We'll get that scheduled. I hear no objections, so we'll go with that. And then also Designer Review Board is gonna meet on the fifth of June. Wayne Savings Bank was acquired by Main Street Bank. The FDIC has mandated, there's fourteen locations that were acquired by Main Street. And they were mandated by the FDIC to all change their signage on the, on a set date. It was supposed to be last Friday, but that didn't happen. The new signs aren't up. So they've applied. The next meeting of Designer Review Board is the fifth. I just wanted to give you a heads up. If you see these signs go up without permission, it's because the FDIC mandated that it all has to happen at the same time. They, you know, they fully admit they would, don't wanna do this without approval, but we kinda have to to stay in operations. So I told them we can work with that, considering these unique circumstances.
And they don't need variances, you don't think, for any of them?
No, it's just changing out the existing to the new. Yeah. Melway Paving has completed the cemetery. I think there's some cracks, or joint sealing to do yet. But it's resurfaced. It looks awesome. It's gonna look really good for Memorial Day. The guys have been working up there pretty diligently already. So there's, there are some repair areas that it's tight up there and those trucks don't turn real quick or short. So there's some solid repair that needs done. I think that's pretty much all done now, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
There might still be some touch up.
Yeah. After they milled, we went up, Pat and I, and walked virtually the whole thing with them. There was half a dozen spots that were very bad after places that were down to dirt. The third road up from the bottom, pretty much that entire stretch, if you think about the main loop from end to end, was, there was a seam of clay running right in the right tire, or I guess south tire track, I'll call it. Couple other spots, corners and on hills that were bad. The exit was, it fell apart.
The exit was bad.
Pretty horribly. So I gave them the okay to do full-depth repair in those sections. They put, they dug out as far as like eight inches below where they were supposed to be, put stone in, put GeoGrid, it's a fabric material to help bridge, and then put base material in and paved off of that. It's around $30,000. We had plenty appropriated to cover that. My thought was, I don't know when that cemetery was last resurfaced, this'll last well beyond all of us, I'm guessing, with the amount of traffic up there. So if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, be done with it. So I hope that's okay that I did that, but I did.
At least it's done right.
It's done.
It's done right.
Nothing really on the capital improvement items. We've been talking about the tree planting. Arbor Day Celebration was held on the twenty-sixth with the first graders. There's another tree on the bank there along School Street. Then each kid got a sapling to take home and plant. It's always a fun little program, teach them a little bit, talk to them. And then Harley Road, he always buys them ice cream. He has a bunch of ice cream bars of some sort that they all get, so that's fun. Somehow the committee never gets any. We have to work on that. And also at the elementary school on May third, so they do this program. I think it's twice a year, they have a behavior incentive program where kids can earn blue tickets, like little raffle tickets for going above and beyond. And then the teachers come up with all these different rewards. And they have little buckets. It's kinda like a silent auction. The kids can put their tickets in the bucket, whatever they wanna do. One of the, I mean, they have huge community involvement in this. There's, there's people in the building doing nails and hair, decorating cupcakes, yoga, they have yoga instructor in. Where we get in, we don't do the yoga, but where we get involved.
I'd buy raffle tickets. I would buy tickets.
So the last two years, we've gotten involved. We take some of our equipment up and those kids come out, we let them climb on it. We demonstrate it. So if you heard horns honking on May third, everything with a horn, those kids just lay on it the whole time. It's a lot of fun. And so Pat was there and Clay Shepler from the utility department. Thanks to those guys for helping out. I told Pat afterwards, one of the really cool things about it is, one of the boys, I had, I was on the backhoe, and one of them was asking me what all these hoses are. And I was explaining, it's hydraulic hoses. And he started asking questions, so I was explaining how hydraulics work. And you could just see his gears turning. It, it's such a good thing to get these kids interested in this stuff. A lot of them are, you know, we have a lot of farming and equipment around here already. But you could really see his wheels spinning that he was getting in. He started asking more questions, like, so that moves this? And it was good. You know, these are, well, this kid was probably a fourth or fifth grader. That was really, I really enjoyed that, getting them into something that they could make a good career out of. So it's a lot of fun. Thanks to the school for getting us involved in this. It's, we're there maybe an hour and a half, two hours at the most. And it's a nice little break from the routine, but it's a good community engagement type thing. Chief was involved in another. I'll let you talk about that if you want. Last thing I have, Solicitor Hines and I have been working on some legislation. We've got a, got the whole list of equipment and vehicles that surplus that we're ready to get rid of. Should be ready next meeting. And we'll get that, that rolling once it's passed, then we can get it listed on GoDeals and go from there. That's all I had. Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. I spent most of today out measuring and marking sidewalks. So if people see white paint out on the sidewalks, those are the ones I'm looking at getting done this year. So it's all over the place. That's it.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
Chief?
Just to follow up with Nate, have you guys seen my Facebook posting? One of the rewards was ride with me in a cruiser with lights and sirens on. So I got six students, one at a time, one from each grade, from kindergarten up through fifth grade. Mrs. Wood was their co-pilot, so they rode the back. I took them around the parking lot with the lights and sirens on. Then we parked in the courtyard. I let them come up in the front seat. I explained everything, allowed them to turn the lights and sirens on. It's hard for them because they're so short when they're in the backseat to even tell that the lights are on. So I gave them a chance to get out of the car, walk around, see all the different lights that are on the car, then let them blast the siren, hit the air horn. Explain to them with radar, the, the car cameras. A couple of them pointed out that we carried guns in the cars. So it, it was neat. The interaction's always fun, watching their, their eyes, you know, shine up whenever they get turned. And some of them would turn siren on and turn it right back off. So I was like, you're good, you can pass the people. And we were in the courtyard, so I'm sure it was echoing everywhere. Sean Oxworth, he said he could hear it. So it was a good time when we were up there. Then another, this past Friday night, they had their fun fair. I'm not sure exactly what they call it, but the fun fair. I had a couple officers go up as time permitted. And from what I have been told, they did a little bit of touch truck thing, brought some of the other kids out because it was kinda restricted to only the kids that chose that program. So I'm sure that everybody in the school heard when the lights and sirens on. So someone more got to come out and see the, see the cars and the lights and the officers talk to them. So that was a good thing for them to be able to do. Saturday, we had LEPC, which is Local Emergency Planning Committee. Once every, I think it's a five-year, four-year or five-year cycle, we have to do a tabletop drill and then a full-scale drill. Saturday morning was our full-scale drill for this cycle. So it was us, the sheriff's office, District One, Western Homes, and East Homes was there because they're the hazmat team, EMA, and then several surrounding county EMA directors come and they evaluate the scenario. And what we had was a semi-truck, semi, a semi-truck rollover hauling hazardous waste. And we all kinda come in and do our thing and show the evaluators what we do. And it's really hard because when you're on scene, you don't think. You're thinking, but you don't speak all the time what you're going to do during these evaluations. You have to speak out loud. You know, what you're gonna do, that you're gonna put an officer here, you're gonna put officer here, we're gonna go clear this area. Read what the placard said, what the radius of the evacuation is. And that's just for us. You know, the fire, the EMS, the hazmat teams, they have to be a lot vocal. They're actually doing more than what we are up until we have to do the accident investigation. So and from what I gathered from all the reviews, we, everybody did a good job. We got it done before it started pouring on us, which was a good thing. So you know, but what we had other activities going on at Fairgrounds, so we kinda had to, to scale things down. Didn't get to use the sirens for that morning, but we did get to use our lights. So I think it was a good evolution and something that's, that's good to see because our officers, I told Jason from EMA, I can remember my hazmat training more from when I was in the Navy because I was around nuclear stuff than what I remember in the academy. You know, it's just not all covered. So he's looking at it in the future, giving us information, possibly bringing a law enforcement hazmat training because, you know, within town, we could very easily roll up on something before the fire department does. Out there, fire department got dispatched first for that scenario, so they were kinda there. Even if it was happening at Fairgrounds, like it is, they very possibly could beat us in general anyway. So kinda slows down our response and we kinda followed their lead as far as the safety zone and go from there. So that's something that we're looking at in the future, is getting, getting the officers some hazmat training because it's not something you think about, but it could be something, you know, really simple. Just a truck hauling chemicals to them, fall over, you get a spill. So it's, it's something good for all of us. And there was four of us out there, me and Captain Lay, Sergeant Barkley and Stephanie Nat were out there. So it was a good time. Have fun. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Bobby?
All right, just a couple things. Actually, I need to pass this around. These are the financials for April, so everyone can just initial those to acknowledge that. And then I'm working on budget, so I should have a draft for you guys next council meeting to kinda take a look at. And then we'll have the June council meeting to discuss a little further in July. We'll, that same July eighth meeting, we'll need a budget hearing prior to the council meeting. So we'll kinda coordinate the times. I stepped in there and got my slot, but we'll coordinate times for that budget hearing.
We can go first and then have a budget hearing and then council?
Yeah.
I'll say six thirty for the public hearing for the zoning change. This fifteen minutes.
That works. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Six forty-five for.
Sounds good. That's all you have?
Thank you very much. Bob?
I don't have anything new and nothing as schools drag around. But just a couple of updates. The speed limit issue, the balls in the court of O'Donnell, we haven't heard from them. Called a couple times, haven't heard back. So hopefully by next meeting, I'll have some of them more concrete to report. The indigent burial thing, the cremains, the balls in the court, the court and also the volunteer guardianship program. So we can hear from them. Nate, Troyer and Nate Skolman have been working on claim forms on the PFAS. We have to submit the claim form, even though we don't have PFAS in our water system yet. But in order to participate in this, these two settlements with DuPont and 3M, we have to submit a claim form. And then if later on we are positive for PFAS, then we can collect on that. So they've been working on that. And I learned today from Nate that we're checking for PFAS every six months. So that should make the people in Millersburg feel better about their water system. So PFAS clear right now.
Thank you very much. Committee meetings, we have Designer Review Board, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm way behind. The only thing that I needed to remind council is our next meeting is the twenty-eighth on Tuesday evening due to Memorial Day. So just remember that. Brad, do you have a committee report for Park yet, or do you wanna wait on that?
I can report now if you want me to.
Sure.
So Park's committee met again today. I thought we made a lot of progress between the last meeting and, and today. We made a decision as a committee. We wanna present what we've discussed to Village Council for your vote and hopefully support. Had a lot of conversation about what to do with the existing hard surface down at the airport park. And we came to the conclusion that, and we all agreed that we wanted to add an additional two pickleball courts down on the existing hard surface. So we had estimates done by Vasco to add an additional two pickleball courts with the fencing and netting and posts came to $28,901. The committee agreed to proceed with those courts. In addition to that, there was also discussion about upgrading the existing backstop area at the baseball field. Nate Troyer met with Mount Home Fencing this afternoon and they, they felt that in a range, I think between two and $3,000 that they, they could upgrade the existing fencing, keep the posts to the baseball field and add additional fencing for probably less than $3,000. Am I saying that correct, Nate?
Yep.
Okay. So there was also discussion about moving one of the bleachers from the third, is it the third base to the first base side? And then adding additional concrete for those bleachers during that move at a cost of probably $1,500 or less. So a lot of moving parts going on down at Airport Park. We also talked, but didn't make any decision about adding a dugout for the home team and, and the away team. Nate's gonna reach out, get some estimates for those, and we'll need to get it at some point. But I, I would like Village Council to, I guess, vote on proceeding with those upgrades if we could do that. So the, the pickleball parts will be added, the sizing and the fencing and the spacing around will be identical to what is there, just kind of a copier to the.
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
She maker?
Aye.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Con?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Brad. The Business and Housing Committee met on May eighth. We talked about a lot of different things. We've had a lot of discussion in a little bit of time. We talked about the hip property auction. We invited Bob Hines to come to our meeting and he worked up an announcement for the day of the sale that if anybody is interested in annexing into the village, then they have the option of water and sewer. And so that, that announcement's going to be made on the sale day. We talked about the school property extensively. We talked about proposal. We also talked about the nursing home property. And we talked about more murals. So we got a lot done. We are inviting Arnie to the next, Arnie Oliver to the next meeting, which is June twelfth at six, to answer some questions about all of those things that we talked about. So it was a, it was a very good meeting. Old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Sorta do. I forgot to tell you, with the Arbor Day Celebration, we got that cool poster from the art teacher. She had the kids make that for us.
I love it.
It's pretty neat.
That is really cool. That's really cool. We did not receive any of the Appalachian Grant money. That all went to Killbuck. I think it was 5.7 million that they got. So they'll, they'll be getting a lot done down in Killbuck. So good for them. I think that's great. Any other old business? New business?
I've got two issues, both traffic. One, the back exit of Dairy Queen on the Glen Drive. There's a sign there that says right turn only. We don't have any, that's not under us, is it?
My, my understanding, if you're leaving private property, it's not enforceable. But if you cause an accident, it's up to whatever to determine what, who's the fault?
If you cause an accident, you would be at fault for the accident.
It's like commercial savings bank. They'll tell you you can't.
The thought with that was because of the turn lanes on Glen Drive, right there. Generally don't want people turning across multiple lanes. If they wanna head north, they should go out on the South Washington.
The next exit right, or the next street up, there is no sign. It's the same thing.
The turn lane doesn't go up that far.
Okay, it's going into those business building. Coming out of there, it should be no right turn. That's still multiple lanes. And there's no sign there.
Your turn line to go, he's talking about, if you're coming down, if you're coming down Glen Drive, then you've got the lane that'll, that you get into to go left the light. So that'd be, that's three lanes, but you only have two when you're coming out of Professionalville. You just have this lane, this lane.
Okay. Well, anyways, does the sign have to be there or could it be removed?
Could be.
Who do we approach about removing it?
It's their property if they wanna, I guess I don't know for sure how that would work.
I would think that because that's a traffic control issue, I would think they ask the village before they put it up. I, you know, I don't know, but you're right, and this is not just Millersburg, but if you're on private property and there's a direction sign, you know, no right turn, it's not enforceable by the place. You could be cited for that, for doing that. But the insurance company is probably gonna ding you if you get into an accident. That other one, to me, it's a Miller, it would be a Millersburg call. I mean, it's a traffic control issue, right turn only. I, I don't think I'd do it without talking to the owners first, but.
You've got the left turn lane into Goodwill Comfort Mans Drive, and then you've also got the left turn lane for Glen Drive onto South Washington. So you've got virtually four lanes, different movements there. At, at the Dairy Queen Drive, they're just at the south end of it. That was the thought behind it.
Somebody told me it was when they were building back there, that's why the sign was put up. I mean, I had no idea, no.
I remember we talked about it during the site plan review of planning and zoning. That's one of the things we requested.
Well, I'm glad it's not enforceable because I make a left-hand turn there all the time.
Attaboy, Bob.
And I'm not the only one.
No, you're not, Bob.
Don't cause an accident.
Well, there's never any traffic. I mean, you know, you look both ways and there's nothing there.
It's actually better if you're going south to come out of there, go to the traffic light and turn south and try to get out of Dairy Queen.
Don't feel bad, Bob. I jaywalked on the way to the meeting tonight, so.
Was that your only traffic issue?
No, the second one.
Cause I have one after.
Second one is South Washington and Clay Street, the Y. If somebody's coming up through with a semi, If somebody's coming up through with a semi, people going south off of Clay. Are actually left of center and almost hitting this truck driver twice, two different times. Want to know if there could be lines painted clear through the intersection, if that's what we want to call it, or how would you get over that?
A semi shouldn't be on.
Yeah, they're going north on Washington Street up Clay, coming through town.
So what are they doing?
It's the people coming south.
South.
On Clay heading towards Walmart.
They're more or less left of center.
Going left of center.
Yeah.
The semis are doing it too. And if you're at the, when you're, when you're, when you're, that's very narrow there.
It is very narrow.
So if you're coming up to my, to, and you're waiting there, there are literally, it's not just semis, hug, hug that. If you're waiting there, hug coming around that thing, and they're going left of center, he's absolutely correct.
So thinking about the intersection at, at um, is it Hebron? Yes. Okay, so do you remember how last time ODOT paved through there? That, when they did their striping, I had said, can we put the, the.
Dotted.
Yeah. Um just to keep everybody, you know, to maintain their lane, and they did that, that was not a problem. So I don't know that ODOT can come in and just do it right now, since it's not a new pave job, but I don't think they have any problem with marking the pavement. In that way through an intersection, so.
I'll call ODOT and find out, how about?
Well, we have that agreement with them that they do all our striping on state routes. It's obviously going to be on their schedule, but.
Yeah.
We could talk to David to see if that's something they could add in at that location, it could be a solid double yellow.
No.
Because of the public streets intersecting there.
It's just a dashed line.
But a dashed line, it's possible.
Didn't a couple of years ago you talk about the possibility putting a turn lane there at that intersection?
They did a safety study, and that was one of the things they were, had looked at doing, but never got any funding for it.
I just don't see how there'd be enough room.
It would involve widening.
Oh god.
It wouldn't be in the existing footprint of the road, there was widening involved.
I mean, we still have semis coming down front and then thinking they can turn onto South Washington.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's common sense would tell you, you can't do that.
Bob, you have any more?
No, that was it.
So I wanted to address um that people need to realize. That they, there are two parking spots in front of the post office too. So they cannot be parking after that second spot, blocking the drive next to the post office. So last Thursday, there was a truck that pulled up, this, this has been, it's getting worse, with a trailer. That blocked the drive then next to the post office so that people cannot get in and out of there. So um people still park on the sidewalk across from, right in front of the Bright Speed Century Link Building. And they will still park at the corner there, um in front of Jeff's, in front of the office. And if you're coming down the alley, you cannot see, so I'm going to remind people that if I see it, I'm calling the police department. Because, and that yellow curbing needs to be, hopefully that'll get off, but they cannot be parking there. And the person said to me, well, I can't find a place to park, well, there was no way that a truck pulling a trailer was going to ever park in a spot. And people have gotten too used to that, there's two spots, after that is not another spot, and after that is not another spot. And that, that's got to stop, it's clust, it's just, it's so cluster-y there, because then when that person's there and they go to pull away. And two cars, the cars are coming up and down south, and people are walking, it's just dangerous, and it's gotten worse, because people have just. That's how they, I'll just run into the post office, and they end up being in line for a while, and they block the thing, UPS guy getting it out, so it needs to stop. And I'll be calling if I see it.
Andrea, I see that all the time too.
Yeah.
And, and the, the hard part about enforcing that is that it's usually really quick. So you know, if you call and report it, they might be gone.
Well, the thing of it is, is when I went, there was one line open at the post office, and this was what was interesting, he was five people back, it was, you know, so he was going to be there a while. And when I walked in and I said, yeah, who has the truck with the trailer blocking the draw, he, it was, and he didn't care, he, you know. Till I said, well, I'm gonna, you know, but people need to be on notice, if I see it, I'm saying something. Because it, it has to stop.
Yeah, well, it's dangerous.
It's, it's, it's dangerous.
Okay, anybody else have new business? I've got a few things, first of all, I wanted to thank all of you that are here, Andrea, Bob, Tom, um Brent and Brad, all of you wrote letters. I submitted a grant to Troy Ballerson's office. Um to ask him for money to help us with our Worcester Road Waterline Project, and you all submitted letters to me, and thank you very much, I appreciated that quite a bit. Um I wrote a letter to support, a letter of support for the Holmes County Health District. Um for another grant to help benefit um seniors and getting them active in our community, so I gave them um a letter the other day. Um the Lions Club is talking with the Legion and the Eagles to see about working together to put a lit flagpole at the South Y. In that little area. Um so I called Nate and talked to him, and we do have electric down there, obviously, because it's lit up. Um and I talked to Dale Obringer, he's the president of the Lions Club, and told him that, you know, there would need to be. Electric run from our box to the flagpole wherever they want to put that. Um so I just wanted you to all be aware that that is something that they are all discussing, they haven't looked at pricing or anything yet, but that is up and coming. So I think that would look really nice there. Um also, this coming Friday, I will be attending the new mayor's class in Columbus and hopefully learning a lot, so we'll see how that goes.
Can I throw something up about, you know, the Y?
Sure.
There's a religious sign there on the property.
Where?
Uh not too far from the actual intersection of the Y. And separation of state and church, doesn't that, that affect that?
Would typically.
It says I believe something, it's, you know.
I'll have to take them, I don't recall seeing it.
It's a yard sign.
Yeah.
It, it's a yard sign, I, I don't see that as offensive.
If I see them, I usually pull them, because I don't want to get into that being an advertising.
It's sat there, it is sat there, I thought it was directed at me. I was hiding with this, it was very dear, it was scripture.
Hey Andrea.
I thought it was very peace, I, okay, I need to remember that. Yeah, that is anti-humor.
That's great.
I liked it, but it's offending somebody.
So any of our property, we get them out at the water plant, sewer plant, people tear a sign, we, we take them, because we don't want to advertise it on our property, so I'll run down and grab it.
I think it's the rental, so you'll have to see, so you know where.
Oh, maybe, okay.
It's their property, I believe.
Oh.
So I think, cause he knows it, so it, it'd be behind the little barn, so you know.
Yeah.
Across from my top yard.
Yeah.
Then they've got the light garage there, and that's where the sign sits, and I think he knows that.
Then that would be on there.
That's, yeah.
I think it's on our property.
I'll check it out.
Nate can check it out.
You're gonna check, go get it for the man, Andrea.
It would hurt any peaches.
That's great.
Yeah.
Uh anything for executive session? Any visitors wish to address council? Nothing, Melissa? No, no. No, you're good. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second, Con.
House sitter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Caleb?
Yes.
She maker?
Aye.
And Von?
Aye.
All right, thank you, have a wonderful evening.